Mario Ready? Good morning, it's 10:01 and the Mayor's Council of Guam regular meeting for August is now called to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Jesse Allen.
Present.
Mayor Joe Alvarez.
Mayor Richard Lewis.
Can we sit down right?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jesse Allen.
Rich, can you turn on your camera? Mayor Rich, just turn on your camera, just to see, for attendants.
Mayor Peter Beneventi. Mayor June Bloss.
Present.
Got you, brother.
Vice Mayor Pedro Bloss. Mayor Franklin Chumpaco. Mayor Anthony Charageloff. Vice Mayor Christopher Farren. Mayor Michael Gomatauto. Mayor Robert Hoffmann. Vice Mayor Ann Leon Guerrero. Mayor Francis Lozama. Mayor Rudy Paco. Mayor Johnny Canata. Mayor Louise Rivera, present. Mayor Frankie Salas. Mayor Wayne Tontas. Mayor Kevin Siswiko. Mayor Vicente Titigui. Mayor Brian Cholahi. Vice Mayor Ed Tosco. Vice Mayor Albert Tovis. Mayor Alan Nagokta. Mr. President, we have 16 members present.
Great, thank you.
We have a court.
Thank you. In compliance with the open government law, the first notice of this meeting was advertised on the Pacific Daily News on July 30, and second notice on August 4, 2025, and posted on the government of Guam public notice portal. Additionally, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the Mayor's Council of Guam's YouTube channel. Please stand for the national anthem and the Guam hymn. Thank you. Is Congressman Moylan here? He should be coming. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on until he arrives. I'll move on to Valerie Rages, the Executive Director of Salvation Army. Is she here? No, we're going to move on to Mr. Alfred Affligui, Special Projects Coordinator from the AG's office. Please join us in the front here. Wilfred, probably. Wilfred. Maybe, sorry. Wilfred. Mr. Affligui, would you mind if we accept the congressman first? Okay, thank you so much. Congressman Moylan, please join us in the front. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, half a day. It's good to be home. If you don't mind. Look at that, already using the mayor's desk. Okay. Appreciate just this time for some brief updates of what's going on with our office and how we want to support the mayors as much as possible. So first thing to discuss is regarding the community project funding, CPS. So presently, we have some CPS in there. We thought we can get 30, but then it changed with the overall skinny budget to 15, so that's what we got. These projects that we have included in the House version is now in the Appropriations Committee, and we're pushing to make sure these projects that we got for Guam continue. These are projects that we had to fight for against the other states as well to ensure that we continue to get what we need for Guam. And I'll just highlight one of them. We've got the mayor right over here. For Talampago and Orda, we had the multi-purpose emergency center, first ever of its kind on the island. So what the mayor expressed to us, what he needed, were a few things that needed to be included in order to get your permit to be occupied. Funding was necessary for that. So in the CPF for Talampago Orda, for their multi-purpose emergency center is 918,00941. It's not everything that the mayor needed, but it's additional money that we can help support. Now, we still got to come up with other funds. So those are some of the things that we can, from members, also tag into the appropriation annually. So if there's other projects that you folks need, this is where you can come and ask us. And every year, it kind of changes depending on what budget is remaining to do this. So excited about that. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and we just got to get it passed. Okay? The next subject we just want to mention to you is how's it going with SSI? SSI meaning Supplemental Security Income. Equality Act. So we introduced a measure because the territories other than NMI is not included. So along with Puerto Rico, US Virgin Islands, and American Samoa and Guam. This has been an ongoing situation for many members of Congress before. It doesn't mean that we're wasting our time, it's about timing and how this can get approved. So we continuously fight for that to make our residents eligible. It's because many of them are living off-island because they lose a great percentage of income for those in their family that qualify for SSI. So we want to, it's only right that all the territories should also be included. So it's a matter of where we find the budget for that, but that fight continues on, and we're united with the other territories that also are excluded from this. So that's where we are with that. Then also, we had a mayor, Anthony Charageloff. Where are you? Oh, behind me? Off-island, okay, cool. Okay, I just saw him a couple of days ago. So he came into our office regarding the mail service, right? And that's package delivery and pickup. He's fighting for home delivery for his mail in the area. We've got long lines at the post office in Agania and Baragada. Can we get at least a dedicated pickup lines for this purpose, for the villagers? And then he also got a good suggestion. We're recommending the mayor's office become, I guess, certified or at least have that mail delivered to the mayor's office, and allow the mayor's office, while we figure out all these other postal requirements, to get their actual boxes they need. In the meantime, allow the mayor's office to distribute the mail to their residents, as long as it's approved by the residents. So we'll be meeting with Tammy. Ralph and I will be meeting with Tammy to also discuss that and promote that, and try to expedite what's needed in Aran as well. I know we've got Aggett Mayor up there, okay. So we're working with you also. I think we need an A&amp;E, right, for you. We can talk about it offline. Okay. So that's also, we're assisting them also in their Aggett Post Office. So mail service is one of our duties as well. What we've noticed too, was that me? Okay. Okay. Chinese are listening. Okay, sorry. What we also seen when we went to the different mayor's offices too, we have all this grant money, but it's not easy to apply, as all the directors know too, and how to make those grant writings accurate in order to get approved. So we're coordinating with the federal agencies, federal agency, to come on over here and provide training for our mayors. We work with the president here to ensure we can have some good location where you can send your staff, and we can train those mayors. We should have this annually, if not biannually, because things change in the office too, so we can continue providing that. And speaking of, if you do do your own grants and submit that in, please give you a cover letter to say we support this, and that kind of moves it up on the pile of requests that they do get. So that's grant writing, we talked about that, okay. And then some other things we handle in our office, a lot of casework. Our phones are always ringing, and mostly it's regarding veterans issues. So if you're, that's an issue we direct with as well. We work with the VA to get them, whether their name is wrong on their DD 214, whether they're not getting approved for their claim, whether they haven't had a response back. We start a case file on them. So for your veterans that are having difficulty and they're talking to you about it, please have them call our office, and then we'll be responsible for that as well. Passport delays, many families come to us. There's a wedding, we had to get off-island because of medical. There was one case, I had to actually go pick up a passport and turn around one day in Hawaii because the mother was expecting, and they had to go to the Philippines because there was a complication, but baby's alive. Even if your constituents say, "I don't need a passport," they really do because if there's a medical emergency, that's when it really counts. So if you can promote them to get the passport, we can't take their passports a regular application, but we help expedite the process. And a lot of times, it's about medical, and it's kind of sad when it doesn't work out for them. Social Security also, they got an issue with Social Security. Just yesterday, it's IRS also, we can deal with that too. And anything on immigrations. We get businesses that come on in, and they got some people coming on in to work at their company, or there's entertainment coming on in, or there's baseball teams coming on in for some place. We can help expedite the passports or the visa waivers, whatever they need to come on in. So consider that coming to us for help as well. And let's see. Oh, we've got some awards, nothing we were involved in, but I want to congratulate MTM 1.2 for your open-air gymnasium and skate park. Congratulations. Likewise, for Assamaina. Where are we? There we go. Another 1.1 million for your open-air gymnasium and skate park too. Congratulations. I learned to skate at one of your villages. Okay. Just a couple more things. We've got an outreach coming on up. We'll send you the flyer. Outreach, thank you. We're going to look at this new and beautiful facility up in Talampata, Orda. That will be Thursday on the 14th at 6:00 PM. Open forum, I'll give out some updates, but it's for the public to address me as well. So we'll send you the flyer, please distribute and let people know. And then we'll be happy to do this as much as we can in the different areas. We just tried central first, then we'll go northern and southern as well eventually here. And then we have another activity, it's called Bridging DCN District. We'll be at Micronesia Mall, the former JP Superstore, on August 29th and 30th. That's a Friday and a Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00. We're bringing in federal agencies to help our constituents, veterans agencies, passport. Other agencies are available there too. So if you want to promote that in your village, we'll send you the flyer on that as well. Please let them know while they go shopping at Micronesia Mall to stop by and take care of something they need on the federal side. That's all I got, Mr. President, sir.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the update. Any questions or any concerns from any of the members?
The mayor, Melissio's recognized.
Thank you, Congressman. I know we met last week, just wanted to see if we can add that to the Melissio Pier.
So we can have that event that you went there, understand the pier is, let's not put more than one person on the time at the pier so we don't become a hazard. Yes, we'll be happy to work with you on that. The Melissio Pier needs funding to refurbish.
Yeah, I mean, Department of Agriculture as well is tracking it, but I'm not sure where they're at on that.
Even if we can double it up.
You know, if you're sitting on some money that, you know, you want to use, can you store it to Melissio?
Yeah, let's get the glass bottom boat back again. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor Alec.
The mayor of Agania has to recognize.
Thank you. Hey, good morning, Congressman Moylan. I'm here, above.
Above.
I'm all over the place. Yeah, sorry, guys, I'm just, I'm a little under the weather right now, but, you know, for the technology of Zoom, it helps. You know, Congressman, I appreciate the visit you made, you had with the mayors for us freshman individuals that just got in. I know we did discuss about the Atlas program. I do want to circle back with you when you have a chance, perhaps with your team, with my nephew. Anyway. Your team, regarding the Atlas program with the, you know, the accessible workstation, you know, for the VA, what we talked about in my office.
That's great.
That's just one question, yeah. Yeah, we discussed that as well, and I'm still moving forward with that. To also, is there a site that we can look, or perhaps maybe you can present that? Any grants that you know that will be available to us as opposed to just us, for me personally, searching out there? So something that you can have that's online or something you have in your office that you can, that's available to us? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure even through the coordination with the other mayors here, that whatever, one person was successful with, we can also share that with the council to make sure these are things we can jump on. Since it's approved for one mayor, it should be approved as well for many others. So, but yes, as we come along, we would want to promote this for the mayors, and then we provide a cover letter on top of that to help expedite the process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay, but just, but do you have, there's something you have online or something you have on a site that would show that any grants you have that we can be all associated with, is basically the question?
Yeah, we don't have that. I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds, so it's based on need. But we can certainly look into that, just to see what helps fit for the island, especially from the water side, drainage side, pier side, and then our facilities too. So yes, I'll be happy to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Congressman.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The mayor of Manila is recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Congressman.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. How's our supplies on the MRE? I just want to say thank you. It's been a very great help, and, you know, especially when they come to our communities and they're reaching out for food supplies. We still got a good amount ahead of us here. Can we continue to request for the MREs?
Absolutely. We have our expediter sitting in the back from my office, Mr. Rob Scambaluri. Ron, so far, we got over 600 pallets, right, out the door?
Yeah. 500-plus pallets out of the Canadian, is it? Was it just 600 pallets? It's inspired, it looks bad, it'll be started next year, March.
So next year, March, there's still 600 pallets, and that, we're talking thousands of MREs, container fulls of MREs. Even some are looking at, there's different groups asking, can we send this to the Philippines? And all FEMA is requesting, it's just, get it out our door, it's out our door. We just can't have it being sold someplace, you know, two for $5 or anything like that. It's supposed to be for the general public, so the needy uses in your village, right? So that, it's really important. But yes, FEMA's asking us to help distribute 600 more pallets full. It comes with a warmer, so it sounds like we're getting into, you know, top soloing here.
So I think that's the one they've been coming to the office asking for.
Okay.
Yeah, the update version.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
We'll work with the mayor from Manila, Ralph, and be happy to. And anybody else, please call, contact our office for assistance.
Okay, anyone else? Well, thank you, Congressman, for your time. Thank you for the update, and we'll be in touch personally.
Absolutely. Viva Mayor's Council.
Viva.
Okay.
I'll smile.
We'll just be talking, that's what we're talking, there, there. Okay. 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 Good. Okay, okay.
Thank you again, Congressman. Okay, that sounds good. Mr. Affligui, you may come forward, please.
Good morning, Mr. Honorable Mayors and Vice Mayors. And some friends and uncles. Buenos, my name is Wilfred Affligui. As this young lady is passing out this one-sheet, two-page memo. I just want to preface this by presentation by saying, nationally, August is South Support Month across the US, and we've in the past celebrated here in Guam through four weekends of outreaches, usually at the shopping centers. For this year, being, I've got about a year left on my employment with Attorney General, go back home to where my kids live in San Diego. He asked me to take this on for the next, for the remainder of my period to the end of 2026, and he gave me a small team to go out to the villages, to your centers, and so that's the reason why I'm here. Mr. President, your staff has been nothing but great here in assisting me setting this up. So, stated today, memorandum to the mayors. Attorney General of Guam Douglas Moylan has assigned our specific office to open our doors, go out to your village communities, and provide services in your community centers. And we will provide these services at convenient times for your constituents. I've come up with a proposed outreach schedules as follows. Two mayor's offices will be visited each month on an as-requested basis during the second and fourth weeks of the month. I've come up with the convenient hours, I think, in the evening. These are an hour and a half long. And then even I've included Saturdays from 10:00 to 11:30. Now, for purposes of scheduling, the top of the second page is my email address and my phone number, the office's phone number, and extension 5034 is my extension. So you will get a hold of me, nobody else. Okay? Outreach subject matters, talk about South Support Orientation. And earlier this year, we sent out a survey to South Support for both CPs and NCPs. Those are custodial parents and non-custodial parents addresses. And there were several, the thing, about 7% came back undeliverable because of wrong addresses to the mail. So that's one of the, my goal is to correct those. When we have these orientations, we're going to have a signing sheet, and I'm going to ask the attendants to put in their correct address, phone number, and email addresses if necessary. Now, I'm asking to join the municipal planning council meetings. And as a matter of fact, a friend of mine, who is a member of the Orda Talampago Municipal Planning Council, Mr. John Salas, and he alerted me of this grant that Congressman was just talking about. So I went out there and saw that, and I think everybody should try to get that application in for those grants. And so that's basically my presentation now. Now, one other item that I was researching, I understand that our manomcos and those who have properties and, you know, in their elder years, they're concerned about power of attorney and things like that. But the other item that I was asking is how about no-republic service? Now, the Attorney General said, "I fit the bill, I can pay the fees and all that. I don't have any crimes or anything in my background that will prevent me from being a no-re public service." I'm researching because I need to make sure that I, if I apply for that, and I intend to apply, take the test, and provide that service free of charge to our manomcos. And I'm saying manomcos because I'm a member of that class, of that age group. So basically, that's what I have. If you have any points or questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Thank you, sir. Any member have a question for Mr. Affligui? If none, thank you for your presentation and for your contact information, and we certainly will reach out to you for scheduling.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Public Health. Teresa Ariola is here, so please come forward.
Manana Cidurs, thank you. It's so nice to be among friends. But today is all business, but good business. Good morning, mayors, vice mayors. Mr. President, thank you so much for, this is the wonderful thing about being friends. I needed to get into this council meeting agenda, and I called him right away. And I think it was just timing, right? Because you were just about to put out the notice or something. So thank you for accommodating me, and thank you for picking up my calls. I'm here, I'm here on behalf of, of course, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I brought with me the chief of the Division of Public Health. So Public Health has seven divisions. The largest division is the Division of Public Health. And chief- And Chief Catherine Ankhao is with me and she's here so that you get to know her face. And also, as I talk about what's, what I'm here to present to you. I want to acknowledge that there are several mayors in the room and villages that already approached me about our mobile clinic getting into their villages. And so thank you so much for, I think when you saw the unveiling of the mobile clinic, many of you reached out and said, you know, when you're ready, we want that in our village. Now, when, so effective October of this year, FY26, this mobile clinic was purchased. And of course, we're not going to make it sit around and go rusty, right? There was a reason why it was purchased by federal dollars and that's because we need to get into the villages, especially with people with transportation problems and things of that nature. So our purpose is all about service and it's all about making sure that those who cannot come to the public health clinics, we come to them. And so before you, we gave you several pages, a quick, you can do a QR code. And in the QR code, you're going to come up, the second page is going to come up. We just gave you a hard copy of the second page. Our outreach, we are going to begin in October. There are some blackout dates. And correct me if I'm wrong. December and January, or is it November and December? December, January are blackout as well as April and May are blackout months. But we want to accommodate your request. And we were willing, obviously, there's 19 villages, you know, four blackout months, that leaves eight villages. So there's going to be a multiple, if all the villages desire the mobile clinic to come to you, there's, we're going to, obviously going to have a lot more, probably outreaches, several outreaches a month. And, and so what is the mobile clinic? We want to be able, there's a laundry list on the third page of services. And these services are not only about immunization, but it's also all the divisions that's going to be represented by, that the department has. So Division of Public Health, there's a lot of services about the Division of Public Health. Immunization, WIC, everything that is public health related, we will be there to answer, take questions, help, process applications of that nature. But this, besides the Division of Public Health, there's the Division of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention. And is the Jiggle Mayor in the room? Oh, hi. Jiggle Mayor, I understand that my staff offended you and I apologize. We got a notice that there was a homeless outreach that you weren't aware of and so I want to apologize for that. That will never happen again and that, okay. So I got the message that you were not happy and that, so we have canceled that outreach and we will coordinate better with your office.
Thank you for that. The only thing is that they scheduled, they confirmed they were supposed to get back to us, but no confirmation. And the time that they were asking is going to impede with our senior citizens program.
No worries. That's why there needs to be better coordination with any, any mayor.
And of course, yes, we would like to still have the outreach.
Right. So that is a separate issue because that was specifically the Division of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention doing their own outreach. But if you look at the outreach homelessness, the Division of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention will also be at these monthly outreaches. So this is really just about introducing that we want to start this beginning October. We need your partnership. I can't do it alone, unfortunately. We can bring some logistical, but we're hoping if you look at the documents that was presented to you, there are several things that we, we need your help if you can help with additional tables, chairs, things of that nature. A space, a specific space where the mobile clinic can park. Because, you know, the mobile clinic is pretty big, you know? And so, and access to public restrooms because there is no restroom. Now, how do you want to do this? It's really up to you. Some mayors might start thinking, maybe we'll do this as a lead-up event towards our fiesta. But then some mayors might think, we already have a lot of annual things and we don't need it during our fiesta month? Maybe we need it in an opposite month. It's really up to you. And we encourage you. This is public health. Since I've been the Director, I've always had this vision that we need to get back into the community. That's this administration's vision. And we do not buy this very, very expensive mobile clinic just to sit around and rust. So this is my appeal to the Mayors and the Vice Mayors, the villages that we want to partner with you. And I just look forward to working with you for a while. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Teresa, I do have, one of the things that we've talked to other, other organizations about is mental health. And I think it is so important to consider a component of mental health, therapy, therapeutic assistance perhaps, simply because a lot of our problems are drug-related. And so we have many organizations that are already conducting screening. And of course, this is definitely something that will be beneficial. But if we can take a look at the mental health aspect and include them, that's number one. Go ahead, did you want to, you want to comment?
Yes, let me address that.
Yeah, sure.
So on the national level in the public health, the writing is on the wall. Unfortunately, you know, I came from behavioral health and unfortunately, the Trump administration has reduced and eliminated a lot of SAMSA grants. And SAMSA is the main funder for behavioral health and mental health because the writing is on the wall. And the writing is very false under our space. So as I mentioned to you, the Division of Public Health is also house our clinics. And so I want to recognize Mayor Tony Charagoloff who sits on the Community Health, Community Health Clinic Board as well as Alan Angata, Mayor, thank you so much. They represent you on the Community Health Clinic Boards. And the writing on the wall on the national level, Mr. President, is that everything is going to be integrated holistically within primary care, which means the clinics, you no longer go to Guam Behavioral Health for this or, and then go to a separate doctor for that. It needs to be holistic health. So that's why there's more grants available in the primary care setting for behavioral and mental health. Now, as you bring this up and I talk about mobile clinic, that's the one thing, we're going to obviously invite the obvious partners. So to these outreaches. And so be assured of that, that we'll have our behavioral health professionals invited as well as we already have some behavioral health professionals within our primary care clinics.
Well, that's great. I think the, the issue or the concern then would be education, right? In our marketing and in our advertising of these mobile clinics. So that people, certainly we're not going to get everyone to come to the clinic if they have some issue regarding mental health. But at least if they know it's available, then if someone is so inclined, they, they could perhaps visit, right? Just like how, I mean, you came from an agency that dealt specifically with that, with the 988 number and maybe education about the 988 number as well, right? Just simply because there's just so much of that going around the island.
Too much.
Yeah, too much.
Unfortunately, a lot of our social ills, I would say eight of 10, eight out of 10, if you look at it, it stems from drug abuse.
Right. And that's, that's precisely the point of having other, you know, this, the, the mental health aspect or the behavioral health, right, component within these, these clinics. So I appreciate that, that that's inclusive. And then secondly, because I said that many, like the Lions Club and other, Dr. Titanow and other organizations are doing screening, right? So every, there's so many organizations wanting to do it and it's great. The Guam Diabetes Association. And I was on a trip recently with a different people, a part of all of that. And we had the same concept, the same consideration. And then I had mentioned this, the mobile clinic before you had called me. And I think where most of us want to, what we want to ask is from here, how do we continue care? How do we follow up with care?
Continuum of care.
Yes, right.
Okay, I'll have Dr. Ankhao talk.
Thank you, Director. Mr. President, so since it's going to be the entire Department of Public Health Agency who's going out to the community, we're bringing in the service to the community as the Director said. And one of the, part of our team is the Community Health Center. Your issue about the mental health, we have a mental health team. We have a social, dedicated social worker. We have a nurse practitioner as well. And we are in partnership with Jibwic. So even other non-government agencies or NGOs, as you mentioned, the Lions Club, will make sure that, will integrate everything so it's one big outreach. Like if they reached, if the Lions Club has reached out to you, because usually also Lions Club reached out to us to be their partners in the outreaches. So we will have one big outreach, not only coming from the agency. In terms of the follow-up, we will ensure that during the outreach that they will have a follow-up referral or schedule at the Community Health Center.
Great.
So that there will not be break in service. The only biggest challenge, like for the mental health services, we might not be able to conduct immediately counseling at the side because of, you know, there's some people who likes privacy, confidentiality, confidentiality. So we can arrange that, schedule them at the Community Health Center.
That's the perfect answer. And the reason why I say that is because everyone is doing it and, you know, we don't want to turn, spin the same wheels over and over again and waste people's time.
Correct. And then we will be able to also immediately identify, is this something that can be handled at the primary care level?
Okay.
Or it has to be elevated?
Elevated. Then, then to, to continue that conversation, would you, if they have, if they have insurance, would you be able to still issue some kind of referral so they can take that referral to their primary care? Because, you know, there could be that issue where the, the convenience of the mobile clinic is next door to me, so I'm going to go and visit. And then you, through the process, the follow-up can be done at their primary caregiver or clinic, right? So would you issue them, would you be able to give them some type of referral for their clinic?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's possible. But I'm going to put a plug in.
Sure.
For our primary care clinic.
Yeah, no, for sure.
The Public Health Community Health Clinic, that's located in Daredo as well as in Alahan, they are open to see everyone. This notion that the public health clinics are only for the poorest or the most needy is a wrong notion. You can push anybody who's needing a primary care, seeing a doctor, immunization, any kind of care. There's a lot of people out there that don't have a primary care doctor. You can push them to the public health clinics. We accept at the public health clinic, everyone. Everyone. Whether you have insurance or not, whether you're in the government of Guam. Mayor Savar is, former Mayor, President of the Council. She's the Chair of the Community Health Clinic Board. She herself is a patient of the community health and she has Guam insurance. So I can go to, anybody can go to any of, of the two clinics. So I know in the past, it was kind of like, there's this notion that the public health clinic is only for the Medicaid or the MIP folks. We need to wipe that knowledge clean.
And I think that's perfect. I think the part of this process then could be that education. Because as ignorant as I was, that's what I thought too. So, right, that's how it was. So I think that this is great that we continue to do that so that others will know that they're all welcome. Any other member have a question for, okay, the Mayors and Honeys recognized.
I want to thank you for all that you do. I know that the mobile clinic is very handy. And it's a large vehicle. So I know logistically for some of us, it's actually finding the correct area, angle. It can't be on a slope, it has to be flat land. It's this 40-foot huge thing. It's basically a trailer. So as you plan your mobile outreaches, think of, be cognizant of where your location is. Easy access in and out, your turning radiuses and everything. I think that's key. Because you don't want to be like, yes, we want to have the mobile clinic and then realize it's in an area where you really have no accessibility. So you really do need a lot of these infrastructure in place. So thank you so much for that. I know the team that put it together. Congratulations. It's a, it's a huge first for Guam. Huge step in the right direction. I am concerned, and I get a lot of questions about immunizations. They, what they hear in the media, what they, you know, is it going to still happen, not happen? Are they running out of money? Are we still doing it? And then even for this, the older population, the seniors, they're wondering, you know, they're seeing the RSV on the rise. They're seeing a lot more COVID cases on the rise again. Are they encouraged? Are we going to do any kind of general public health outreach in terms of immunizations to just say, hey, if you want to get a booster shot, you can get it. If you want to get a flu shot, we're here. Because I know it's been basically confined to the malls or shopping centers.
Yes, for now, Mr. Vice President, we did have a cut in immunization and our limit like for the adult population, so even for the Medicaid recipients, that's no longer a part of the immunization funding. So we're, since also the Medicaid program is under the Director's leadership, so we're finding ways on how to get that additional vaccine for the Medicaid and MIP and Medicare population as well. But we do have available resources. If we get approval from our grantor, like if we receive an excess for adult, then we do provide adult outreaches as well, immunization. But again, on, based on the supplies that we receive from the federal government as well. And just to interject, on behalf of Mayor Angata and the Director and Mayor Tony, this week is celebrate, is, the Community Health Center is celebrating the National Community Health Center Week. So we invite you to visit us. We do have activities daily, every day. And we have a proclamation signing this Friday at 10:30 at the Governor's Office.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
So, thank you. So Mayor Hoffman, I know that you work very closely with the Lions Club. We are going to try to ensure that we have a bigger and more comprehensive outreach rather than it just being the Lions Club. It could be Lions Club and Public Health. Because, you know, when we're doing these outreaches, it takes a lot of coordination. And it's not that the services at public health, all that we do stop. We got to do that and plan for this. So one thing's for sure, we need to make it very successful. It needs to be worth it. And so I really look forward and, and, you know, I want to thank Mayor Hoffman who's always opening, you know, we're always there, that you know we're always there. Public Health is always there with the Lions Club. So it's going to be a lot of coordination with a lot of organizations that already come to your village to try to be more organized and more holistic outreaches. Rather than public health goes in, Lions Club goes in, somebody else goes in. I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure you have a lot of people knocking at your door.
Yeah, for sure.
And I know that the mayors and the villages want programs. I understand. And so, again, I think we're only, if you look at the seven divisions, are the seven divisions in here? Look at the seven divisions. Public Health touches everybody from crib to, from cradle to crib. So my, my reach is expansive. Children's, manomkos, homeless, people with health issues, you know, public assistance, you know, SNAP and Medicaid. Let me, let me just talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind.
Oh, we just have a couple minutes left.
Okay, one minute.
But then when you're done, just Mayor Hoffman also has something to say.
One minute. I want to make mention, we have been, the first of the 10th, as everybody knows, is SNAP recipient gets their monthly. I don't know, you might have seen some of my press releases asking for your patience and indulgence because we have, we've been having real connectivity problems. I'm not sure if you guys are having connectivity problems in your villages, but we are really having connectivity problems. To the point where the feds and everybody else is getting involved. So I ask for your patience. You might have people knocking at your door because they didn't get their SNAP and needing maybe the MREs or, you know. If you need food, I know that Rob Sin Augustin, who's now under the Division of Public, of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention, is under Department of Public Health. If you need any more commodities, please reach out to Rob. Because you might be getting more people knocking on your doors because their SNAP benefits did not get loaded. We're trying to resolve that. It's a really big issue. It's been keeping us up at night for four days already. So this is what happens when technology doesn't get updated and that the systems are crashing. Because something, one part might be upgraded and the other part of the system can't handle it. So this is what happens when we don't upgrade simultaneously and all the time. So, thank you.
I do have, and my last point is actually something. It's basically preventive care, and it's a section that's near and dear to my heart. It's actually the childcare, community care programs. I know that we have a lot of new mayors in office who are anxious and who want to try, one, try that money. Two is really work on seeing if they can expand the program, create programs that mentor, that help youth after school, during summer breaks. I know I had challenges this summer because there really is no specific community care guidelines versus an overall just childcare guidelines. And I, I asked the whole team if we can help sit down and write that on the side. But I know there were issues with funding and whether the block grant funding is gonna continue. And, but I, I know for my colleagues, they are very interested in youth programs. This is, it was great money given to us. And I think Program in Peneland is a blessing to families. We've had so many block grant, people come through our door, hundreds in our, in our, in our programs. And so I wanna continue that. Unfortunately, the, the guidelines are a lot harder and more restrictive. But I do wanna sit, work on that. But I know the other mayors are interested in becoming certified licensed. And if we can work in tandem to change that policy and rules, and then help get all of them. Because right now, I think it's only Inalahan, MTM, Sinahanya, and Mingila at the time that are licensed or certified. But I'm pretty sure all my other colleagues are very interested in this.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor Hoffman. We're definitely going to, I'll be pulling a meeting together to try to figure out how we can continue it and spread it throughout the island. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yeah. Keeping kids active is the best preventive care you could ever have.
Thank you, anyone else have a?
And you all have my number? Most of you have my number, but if you don't?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, the mayor of Gania Heights is recognized. He's online, Teresa.
Is I Director Ariola from your favorite hometown village of Gania Heights?
Don't tell Mayor Angata that.
Thank you also, Mayor Hoffman, that was a great question. And thank you for asking that question, we need that information. Director Ariola, could you, could you share with the group regarding the homeless coalition, the whole app, department you have within your agency? That I understand there's representatives that are, that oversee the northern, central, and southern? Could you, just real quick, is there, you know?
The Division of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention, Mayor?
Yes, Director, I believe there's, you have individuals that would, that oversee central, different parts of the island?
Correct. So the Division of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention is the newest division in public health. It was moved from the Office of the Governor, as the office, you might remember it as OHAP. Now we call it DEHAP because it's with the department. And so Rob Sin Augustin still leads that division. There are programs to keep people in charge of northern, central, and southern. However, if the mayor's at your level, you, please do not hesitate to call me at my level or Rob Sin Augustin. My number is 482-9231, most of you have it. I don't mind, it's been my number since, for almost forty years. Since, ever since, so. But at your level, I think you should reach out to me or Rob.
Actually, forty years ago, there was no cell phone yet, but thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And we'll, we'll certainly work together. We'll scan the UR code, fill out the survey, and then one of you, right? Okay, great, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Situas Mas, God bless. Thank you, everybody.
BIBA Public Health? BIBA Community Health Centers, right? We'll move on with the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for July, please? There, okay, we're gonna go one at a time. The, I'm gonna go left to right. The, oh, you passed, okay. The motion is made by the mayor of Mingila and seconded by the mayor of Sinahanya. Any, any discussion on the motion?
No discussion.
No discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report? There is a motion by the mayor of Chalanpago. Seconded, seconded by the mayor of Sinahanya. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, thank you. The executive director's report.
Good morning, mayors and vice mayors.
Morning.
I'd like to report out the, that the abandoned vehicles disposal bid is currently on phase four. So basically what that means is, the notice of intent to award was sent out to prospective bidders. Bid statuses were sent out. Now we are just waiting for the fourteen day to conclude and, and then we should be able to move on with that bid. Secondly, the disposal of the white goods and electronics has been rebidded. And it has been rebidded yesterday, August 4th. It's on publication, so any interested bidders will be able to participate. We, I, I've been in discussion with EPA regarding the de-obligation of the recycling revolving fund appropriation, which would have been for '23 and '24. We are currently working with, MCOG is currently working with DOA to de-obligate prior year purchase orders. So we can get a good number of what money is left. Based on the public law, MCOG is authorized to expend prior year appropriation. So I don't have the final figure, so we will still have funding for that specific program. Additionally, the MCOG Central Office, where we house administrative supporting staff, the lease will expire at the end of the fiscal year. The draft bid has been sent to the AG's office for review and approval. And lastly, August 25th will be the deadline to submit all procurement requests. An email should have been sent to your office. If not, it should be forthcoming. Okay? Any questions?
The mayor of Mingila is recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Director. So I know I asked this the last time. I'm just, I'm just curious, upon the bid, when can the district or my districts can request for the amount of, like the vehicles, for example, stuff down, the breakdown? Do we, after that's done, established? Do we, how are we gonna go about the needs of every village?
Every village?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a very good question because it's the first time you've guys done this process. So we have a dedicated staff solely for this specific project that will take a list from every mayor and we'll go through the process with you guys once the award has officially been accepted. So it's, it's not like how you guys were all each given a purchase order and you guys kind of ran with it. We will coordinate all of that for you guys. So you'll ident, pretty much identify the vehicles or the areas where the vehicles need to be picked up. And we'll coordinate with the awardee once the award has been accepted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Director.
Anyone else? Anyone else have a question? No questions? Great, thank you, Troy. We'll move on to committee reports, boards and commissions. The Commission on Decolonization. Vice Mayor Blas, were you able to attend any meeting or?
Yes, so we were scheduled to have one yesterday, but unfortunately, we, we weren't able to make quorum. So I did just go and speak with Melvin Wampat Borja just to, you know, familiarize myself of what they've been doing so far and whatnot. And yeah, so that's pretty much what it is right now. They weren't able to make quorum yesterday due to a bunch of senators being occupied at the, at the time. So looking forward to meeting with them next month.
That's good, you know, the governor's the chairperson of that, that committee. And I, I'll remind her that we did request for the, the council to, or to have the three task forces present to the council. And so since you've taken over, Mayor BJ, if that could be on your radar as well, perhaps, well, you're an elected official, right, in the, in the commission? So you're able to go ahead and ask the three task forces if they're able to perhaps figure out a date when they can present to us at our, well, if they're able to do it first. And then we can talk about, are we having a special meeting? Or are we gonna do it at this regular monthly meeting? But I think that was, that was one of the things that we wanted from the council side.
Okay.
Mayor BJ, did you have something?
Yes, if I may, prior to me, removing myself from the, from the committee, I did speak with Ms. Victoria Lolian Guerrero, who is one of the members. And they have placed that into their, I think that they were gonna discuss that in the, in the, in the last meeting. So that was the extent of my conversation. So I did bring it up to the committee.
Okay, and so that what happens there is if the three different task forces are not prepared, but only certain ones are ready to come to us, then that's fine too. We don't wanna hold back any task force that's prepared. So if perhaps he, he's referring to independence, there's also free association and statehood. Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor BJ, and thank you, Vice Mayor. Any, any questions for the Vice Mayor regarding Commission on Decolonization? We'll move on to Kaha, anything at Kaha? Mayor, Mayor Kevin?
We have, on the last meeting, we're now discussing for the MAGA awards and which we'll be sending out for anybody that would like to make any type of nominations. Also, we, I did thank them on behalf of MCOG for all of their donations that they've been putting out for all of the festivals. And they're very thankful for all of us to, you know, for the mayors. They're asking us to please, if it's possible, just to send them a nice certificate of at least, so that way they can put into their file. Because of funding that they're, you know, they receive is actually through other organizations. So at least they can see and have file and record of, you know, where the donations are being made and how impactful it's being for, to, to the communities. But that's all I have from, from.
Thank you, if you could remind me about the award, the certificate, we certainly can do that. I'd like to make a motion, based on that discussion, I'd like to make a motion to support the nomination of GTA for the Magahaga Awards under the Corporate Champion of the Arts category. Because they have consistently been going village to village to paint those large murals that cost thousands of dollars. And if you don't have one, they're certainly getting to you. And for those of us who have been partners with GTA, they really kind of don't ask for anything else, right? And so because this is the Magahaga Awards and they are corporate, under the corporate category, I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor of Mingila, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, thank you so much. Any other?
Also, Mr. President, just one more thing for Kaha. There'll be requesting from you, just your nice message of appreciation for their booklet, that there'll be, for their souvenir booklet.
Okay, and would you, would you mind just sending me? Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else have a question or any concerns for Kaha? Okay, the Guam Invasive Species Council is, Mayor Guamatato, are you online? Okay, so Mayor, I just, if you're not able to, if you're not able to speak through the, or if you, it's not auto, if your audio is not working, I'd like to let you know then that if there is a possibility before the meeting, if you could talk with the secretary or the chair regarding green waste management so that it could be placed onto the agenda. And the grease, green waste management, I am concerned, village, council-wide, nineteen villages, simply because of invasive species in each village. And is there, is there a mechanism for the council to perhaps develop a plan for the entire month? Sorry, for the entire year for the nineteen villages? And if it's not for the nineteen villages, then by, by sections or districts? I feel like it is, it is a responsibility of the Invasive Species Council to address the lack of a green waste management plan. And if you could have that discussion with the chair to see if it could be added to the meeting, simply because at that meeting, you have all the stakeholders that have something to do with invasive species and perhaps the environment. They, they could chime in. Understanding that we do have the EPA revolving fund, we certainly can use that, but it shouldn't, if that should go away for some reason, if we should no longer have money in that fund, there needs to be a backup plan. And I think that there should be a plan that is established for the island and, and for the nineteen villages. So if you, if you could please, and if you're not able to speak now, you could send me a message or give me a call later. Thank you, Mayor. Any, any other, anything else for Guam Invasive Species Council? None? Okay, we'll move on to GDOE. Mayor BJ, were you able to attend?
I actually have not attended the meeting yet. I've reached out to Mayor Beneventi, just giving, giving me some direction and, and, and giving me, bringing me up to speed. But I will reach out to the President, Angel Sublan.
Thank you.
This week, thank you.
GVB?
They're still focused on tourism recovery and they launched a two-month Sunday night market. So I'm, thank you, everybody, for participating and coming down. It's successful and it's one of the beginnings of the rebounding of tourism. And they're making their way, asking for additional money for airline incentives, which you've seen several articles over the past few days come out. So that's been the main focus.
Thank you. Is there any update on the Tourism Recovery Plan? And how, how they're going to assist the villages?
None, right now, the, in the budget is the request for $11 million for the airline incentives. That kicks off that Tourism Recovery Plan. After that, it's working on preparing the bond package. So that's, that part is on the bond package side, not.
Have you heard of any, any, is there any word regarding the funding under this Tourism Recovery Plan for the districts, for the mayors?
There is a component on it. There is, there is a carve-out, I, I believe it's ten or eleven million also on the total over on bond package side of it. But they're trying to see what is what they have now, what the budget will be for the Bureau for the FY26, and then opening that grant process. So we're, we're gonna, we've reconstituted the committees. We now will do callouts, so we'll do every six months a callout. And as you have events and stuff, you can do there. So your festivals, fairs, that'll come out from there. And then the second part will be for park adoption, park maintenance. So if there's specific parks that they've identified and you want to adopt it, then they'll give you a portion of money for that, to do that, so you can buy fuel, cleaning supplies, paint, all that, stuff like that. So there's a two component on the destination management for that. The bond part is for larger, large-scale improvements, which would be like paving, lighting, fencing, safety measures, signage, things that cost a lot more money to do.
So I, I ask because I'm feeling that a portion, that money under that Tourism Recovery Plan that should go to villages, to districts, might be, might be contentious and might not, you know, it, it might not fly. And so I think you sent a link the other day regarding the GHRA tomorrow. And so I was invited to speak at the GHRA regarding this specific topic and this component within the mayor's council and tourism. And I'm gonna, I think for the most part, on, for everyone, this, this money that we're requesting for, that we would like from the Tourism Recovery Plan to maintain parts of our village, destination areas within your villages, I think is a major, a major, and I keep on using the word, component of the plan, the Tourism Recovery Plan. And I feel like, and if there's anyone that, that wants to, to, to give me any kind of a point on your end, from your village spectrum, based on how you are involved in this Tourism Recovery Plan, based on the money that you're gonna receive, then I, I would like to hear from you. I think one of the things... then I, I would like to hear from you. I think one of the things, we talk about festivals and, and, um, other programs within the village. I believe, and you can chime in, please, I believe that's secondary to maintenance. Because if, if our, your village is not maintained, if it's not beautiful, everything else kind of falls second, right, and falls behind. So I think I'd like to push and advocate for the money that goes to each of us individually, primarily for maintenance and upkeep of what you currently have. Right? Because the government of Guam, we are really the, the worst when it comes to maintenance. You build a building, a build a facility, and you don't maintain it because you don't have the money. You have parks now, um, and you have beautiful parks, and you have beautiful facilities, but you'll need the money to continue to maintain it. I don't know about you, but DPW has come out to Route One and Route Six in PT the last month, and that's just because we've said that they don't come. Uh, and so if there, if DPW is coming out to you now, that's because we're saying something. Um, and so just know that I think that's gonna be something that I'm gonna talk about as far as funding from this Tourism Recovery Plan to ensure that every village has a component that pays significantly to maintain and to beautify important parts of, of your village.
Sure.
Before the, before the festivals and the programs.
So bond money is very specific because there's things that can't, cannot be used, can't be used for personnel, can't be used for general maintenance. So that component of the maintenance of the parks would have to come from the Local Tourist Attraction Fund. The bond money is for large infrastructure projects, because people buying the bonds want to know that there's an investment, not a one-time, will this get done or not? So that's kind of where they're looking at there. So in the total overall, uh, look of total what they're borrowing, if we can shift some of that money locally and say, we can fund it this way, which is why we're trying to roll out the grant programs, which is the destination management side of it. So right now on the tourist attraction, uh, tracking, that's what we're looking at. Uh, we're, the projected TAF, I think, was thirty-five million. I think we're at twenty-two right now, and we saw a few months left. Will we hit that mark? Maybe, maybe not, but the total overall tourist attraction fund funds go to paying their original bond debt service. Then it goes to GVB, then there's a portion that goes to other agencies for other things. You remember, Mayor's Council was stripping of some of that. And so it's carving that out from there. And so I had that discussion with the senators. How can we save this? And then on top of that, GVB's requesting outside of that bond is the additional eleven million dollars. What, where it comes from, we don't know, but eleven million dollars for airline incentives, because we don't wanna share the same fate as the other islands where airlines leave. We had airlines that left Guam. Air Soul left Guam. Dynamic Air no longer does, but Delta used to fly here, and it was on airlift issue. And all these other destinations are offering incentives. And if we don't, we're gonna also end up in that same boat. And what's killing the economies in Saipan, and what killed the economy in Rota and everything, is the lack of air service. So it doesn't matter how many times you can say, look, we have a beautiful island, here's our culture. If there's no airlines there, they're gonna be like, hey, you know? And if you, you've flown airlines, you've come from the, you've seen the capacity, it's a full jet. You've seen, you've seen you fly into Japan, it's full jets. And so their, their airlift is at eighty-five percent or more. So we just need to be able to track more and offer more. So we, we have that uptick right now. It's a, a good season, Korean, uh, some Korean airline and low-cost carriers are flying more in right now. So it's building up, it's gonna take time, but they're coming to us and we're at the mercy of the airlines. Ultimately, it's the airlines' call, and any which way you can kind of dangle that carrot and say, hey, if we cover this cost, the only reason why Taiwan is flying here is because we offered incentives. So now we have direct service from Taiwan to Guam. That's boosting that. So there's that direct correlation. You can think of how many airlines that left. Sebo Pacific was on Guam. And there was no real demand, and they said, you know, it's really costing us a lot more money. We would love to have Sebo Pacific back and all the other airlines, Delta and have that competition, ANA, Air China, China Airlines, all these used to fly to Guam, Thai Airways, and they left. And it's now, that's why that discussion, you saw the discussion Sunday with President Lee. You saw the, uh, opinion page from George Chu, and then I think today in the Post is from Michelle Marfald. So they're all making that case, this is the importance of this. So we look forward to figuring out how we can push that, at the same time, like you say, maintain the parks and who is it? Parks and Recs, DPW, GVB. So we're gonna have the Destination Management, uh, team. I'd love to invite you there and have that discussion so you can see what we have to work with and where we can kind of get pulled for more and actually whose responsibility of certain things. Because you did, you, you did mention mayors have taken a lot more responsibility of things they don't own.
Right, and that's, that's gonna be the point as well. And I'm, uh, to my colleagues who have made, um, verbal, um, verbal agreements perhaps about your parks with another agency, I think you have to go back and revisit that, because you're, you've put yourself in a situation where you're committing to that park, but you didn't receive the resources. You didn't receive the manpower and you didn't receive the funding. And so, uh, tomorrow, my discussion is going to be very real about that. Not that you don't wanna help the agency, and not that you don't wanna be, you don't want to improve your village, but there's, there's a fair, you know, everything is fair, right? It should be fair. So if you're going to maintain it, you should also receive the money, you should receive the resources for it. And the discussion is not about, it's not trying to be adversarial, it's trying to get to the bottom of it all. Understanding the airline incentives, understanding all of that, that is, I agree one hundred percent. But I also believe that there needs to be thoughtful process in the amount or the percentage of that amount that is gonna go to the villages for their maintenance benefit and their upkeep. And when we talk about the bond for facilities, that's important too. Because certainly, you're not, we're concerned about Guam. We're not just concerned about one portion of, of Guam. So if there's a facility within the village that needs, needs the, needs the funding, uh, and you just heard the Congressman with, with MTM and with Asan Maina, that's great. And so if there's anywhere else, uh, and then I'm, I keep, I look you straight, so I'm looking in Jigo, and the mayor of Jigo perhaps, okay, no, all of us, but I'm just gonna say, this is an example. For the mayor of Jigo, perhaps she needs something to, she needs to improve on what was started or what was not done correctly, right? So if that's the case, then we need to address that, you know, with sufficient resources. So, you know, so it's done correctly and then we move forward. It doesn't really matter, as long as it's a facility that we know is gonna prove, improve our way of life here on Guam and our economy, I think we need to address that. So it's just about the percentage, right, of what's getting, going, getting to us.
Yeah, I, I think you can make the real case, an investment
Yeah.
in the villages goes a longer way than investment when other agencies. Because we can manage that, if given the correct resources, we can manage so many things.
Understood. I agree. Thank you. I appreciate that we're on the same page on that. Um, a- anyone else have any questions regarding GVB? Okay, we're going to move on. That's it. Oh, Elder Justice Council. So I sit on the Elder Justice Council. And, um, we're, there is nothing, no new information other than the brochure was distributed in your box. And, um, I know it's only one brochure, but if you need more, just let me know and we'll, or there's a number there, you can ask them for more. Uh, and then we're on a limited budget, so that's why only one was given to you. But if you need more, uh, call them for more or, uh, for the electronic copy as well. Um, we're seeing a rise of, of residents going to the Elder Justice Center. And so the Elder Justice Center does a lot of legal work for typically the manamko. And it doesn't, it, it, there's no, um, uh, what is it, financial cap. So you just, depending on what the, the service is, they'll assist you. And so, and then the services, um, we're trying to get the services, the number of services increased to include, um, divorces and that type of, of, you know, cases. Any questions regarding, uh, I'm sorry, we are still also working on the Ride of Sepukar. So that has, still has not yet been, um, has not been finalized. And we're, we've identified the funding for the Ride of Sepukar, but not typically, not, not a process in which residents could, could actually participate. I don't wanna say participate, but take part or be, understand the program. Basically what it is to bury the dead, right? So those that are in, in financial need. Any questions? Any other boards or commissions or standing committees would like to report? Under Legislative and Finance Committee, is there anyone that would like to make any report under Legislative Finance? Okay, if not, we're gonna move on to unfinished business, to the Student Exchange Program. I did send out a, um, a request for participation if anyone wanted to. I think there's two that are willing to go, so I'm, I'm appreciative of it. I do want to say that the eight students have already been contacted. Uh, I've met with them and their parents, uh, some of them. And, uh, everyone's kind of, everyone's excited to go. The Sweet Potato Festival is in Rota on the August twenty-second through the twenty-fifth. Or I'm sorry, it's twenty-second to the twenty-fourth, but we'll be there from the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth. As we agreed in previous council meetings that we would fund this trip, um, I, now that we're here and we've identified our eight students and we've identified, uh, program costs, I would like to get a motion to approve the expenditure of program costs to be paid out of the recycling, or the revolving fund for the Student Exchange Program in August to Rota. Is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Mayor of Baragada. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, you oppose? I mean, all opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Any questions about the, um, the program? Okay, well, we'll be sure to, to let you know all about it. On, under new business, the points of distribution, you received an email. And remember, Mayor Hoffman also sent out a survey, so what I'm saying about combining the two is you'll see that there's information from the, the survey Mayor Hoffman sent out and the survey from Ken Artero. The difference between Ken Arteros is that it asks you for actual site, so the longitude latitude of where it's gonna go. At the end of the day, the question is, do you want to host the pod, right? Because if you want to host the pod, then you're agreeing to those, to, to doing all of that, distributing all of that. But it's also very important to go back to the survey to say that you need the capacity. Because those of you who have never been through a storm, our, our freshman mayors, you can't do it alone. And don't rely on volunteers. So if the form says, do you need manpower, your answer has to be yes. The way the discussion went with FEMA and Homeland, the, a few weeks ago, was that the manager, the site manager would, would be someone from FEMA, Homeland Security at the time of the, of the emergency. So that manager will be at your, at that pod. The manager and the mayor communicate about the inventory. And so it's not the mayor's responsibility to be at the pod, it would be the manager's responsibility. Uh, the mayor just tells, you know, gives the instruction to the manager, and the manager is the one that deals with our rack. Uh, so then that's where the whole process will go through, right? The manager deals with the rack, the ma, it's not the mayor. Not everybody calling the rack, everybody calling Homeland, everybody calling FEMA because you're out of water, you're out of MREs, you're out of, you know, whatever it is. It's the manager, the pod manager, uh, reporting to the rack, and it's the rack and the pod manager that would, would communicate. So again, the, the bottom line is first, do you want it? Because if you want it, you do make sure, you an, you, you answer those, that survey properly, and you put down the necessary resources that you need, so that in the planning, uh, you're considered properly. The other thing too is for the, the villages, uh, Dedido, Jigo, Mingila, and Baragada, uh, and Mayor, Mayor Tumuning, I'll explain why I didn't include you. But for those of you, I asked for multiple, um, multiple pods, an option for multiple pods if you desire. And the reason being, you know, transportation at the time, right? If the, if the storm is up north and you're wiped out up there, who's gonna travel from Gil Baza all the way to the, the mayor's office side? So you have perhaps a gaffa guma, I don't wanna decide. But you guys end up having to decide your, your longitude and latitude, your points. Um, and the same, and the Mingila, the reason why I, I offered, or I suggested Mingila had different pods uh, because of the demographic, right, in Mingila. Uh, and then Baragada because simply it's central, you have two portions, and perhaps it, it can be served that way. Tumuning because they're on the residential area. They, they were thinking that on the Dedido side, from the Dedido side, your Harmon residents would be able to, to go to the nearest Dedido section, and then you would deal with your, you know, on the, on the Tumuning area, so. But all of this is fluid. So if you decide otherwise, you need to answer your survey and just note it. Uh, and then we'll have, uh, another discussion once all of that is submitted. Okay? Any questions regarding that? Mayor, the mayor's son is recognized.
So, thank you. Yes, I did speak with Ken yesterday, and, uh, there's still several villages that did not respond to their survey. So if you can go ahead and do that. One of the things he did ask me was to work with the mayors on the location so we can get the GPS coordinates for the containers should they need to be dropped off. So I'm gonna send that out on a survey form. I'll show you how to get the GPS, so you can just easily, you're just gonna tell me where, if you say.
Okay, I think, let's go, let's, let's not do that. Let's go, let's go back to the, the, Ken Arteros form has the request for it.
Yeah.
So let's not go double.
No, so, so he's, he has, he has our results, and he saw what that is, so he realizes. So he just wants us, he goes, can you show them how to do the coordinates? I said, yeah. So I'm gonna be able to do that. So I just need to see what you have on your locations, and then I can easily pull up the GPS coordinates using an app. So it's not hard to do.
Can I just, let's not do it for everyone, because not everyone, not a majority have submitted, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's go, we're just gonna, we should just address those that have not submitted, if that's okay with you. Just so that it doesn't, we're all submitting the same information again. Everyone that's complete will, won't reach out to you. If you haven't been completed because you haven't submitted your points, then that's when Mayor Hoffman will reach out to you. Is that okay?
Okay.
Just makes it clearer, because then we see ten million email. Okay? Any, anyone have any questions? Okay, great. We're gonna move on to Christmas events. Um, because the time is coming, uh, there's freshman mayors, everyone, GovGuam, typically, we have Christmas parties. Everyone's excited. I couldn't wait. I had to send out, um, requests for quotations for a ballroom just in case the council decides. Uh, so far, uh, there's only one ballroom that is available in the early part of, of December, and that is Leo Palace. Uh, everyone else is, is, is booked. The Hilton is available, but two fifty is their max. And traditionally, the council would be about three hundred people. Um, but because we have new mayors and we have a great mayor in, um, Melezo and a great mayor in Jigo and a great mayor in Chalanpago, where our three, three hundred packs might grow, right? Well, great mayor everywhere, but I'm just talking about, let's not go into specifics. That's, I did not say that. I'm just saying, we, you know, and then, I did not say that. All I said was, because we have the mayors in those villages, and, you know, we know they have at least eight staff, uh, we're gonna, you know, the, the number might increase. So once we, we're, we're going with something that's economical, right? And so if the Leo Palace, it is further away, but if they're available and they're willing to, you know, give us a good deal, that's probably where we have to go. I guess where I want to go with this is now we're gonna need money. And we finished the money? You have no money. So typically, for the freshman mayors, we've typically paid it in full. Uh, but in this case, this year, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to pay it in full. Uh, we're gonna, we'll take a look at our finances after the closeout reports that are done in September, from Liberation, and then we will come back to everybody to let you know, uh, what that looks like. The other thing about planning for Christmas is typically we involve the staff, and the staff do a lot of the, the details. Um, are there any objections to that? Okay, and so what we'll do is we'll reach out to the staff to see if there's any staff that want to help coordinate the, you know, the fun stuff within the party. And if they do, then we'll, we'll allow them to do it. And of course, the mayors and vice mayors are always welcome to participate and to, to chime in. Uh, additionally, the mayors, we try to get the mayors and the vice mayors to do something at the Christmas party, other than fall down. So if there's something anyone wants to consider leading that, let us, you know, it's the time to think about it. Uh, because some of us are a little freer than others. If there's anyone that wants to chime in, put for both, just let me know, and we'll, we'll take it. Now, if there are absolutely no good dates early part of December, is there anyone willing to go last part of December, twenty-one December beyond? So what I'm saying is, um, because there's some, there's two dates for Leo Palace, I believe that they're gonna check for us for the 7th, 5th and the 6th of December, which is typically where we, when we have our, our mayor's council parties. Uh, but if not, the available, the other available dates are 21, December 21 and beyond. So I'll, I'll come back to everybody just so that you can consider it. So we should know by the September meeting if, uh, it's gonna have to be. The only, the only thing, the only reason why I don't like 21 and beyond is it gets really busy. And then NABENAs typically start December 16th, for those that do it before. And then if it's after, then it doesn't end till either the 1st of January or December, or January 6th. So I, it would be best for us to do it before the NABENAs as well, right? Just for those of us that continue that tradition. Okay, so if there's anyone that has any, any concerns or, um, questions about the, the Christmas event, the party, just let me know and we'll get back to you in the, in the September, September meeting regarding details. Any, uh, we're gonna move on to announcements. For the, the first announcement that I'd like to make is that the citation accountability training with the judiciary may, if you could just pencil it in, and I'm just waiting for them to get back to me, but it may be on the 12th or the 13th of August. So just pencil it in, it'll be in the morning, 12th or the 13th of August. If it is, anyone who, any elected official who attends will be able to issue a citation after that. If you do not attend, you won't be able to issue a citation. So at that meeting, you'll get your, that training, you'll get your citation booklet. And I've asked to give you a cheat sheet, a violation cheat sheet. So the violation cheat sheet that we, I currently have is outdated, cause I lost. If you ever, if you ever, ever lost in court, if you never lost in court, check me, I'll tell you. So, um, any questions with the citation accountability training? None, okay. The Medical City in the Philippines, um, they are offering to host the mayors and the vice mayors for, uh, executive checkup in, at their facility. And they would like for us to, to visit the Medical City, um, in the Philippines. And so we're gonna look for a date, it'll be in September, it'll be early part of September. Uh, so I'll, I'll send out an email to you directly to let you know the dates. You're, you'll be more than welcome to attend. Basically what we'll do is you'll, it'll be about a week. So you'll, you'll go, you'll do your executive checkup and then after your executive checkup, we'll do a, a tour of their facility. If your spouse wants to attend or wants to, to join you, uh, just let us know what insurance they have and if they have medical insurance, and if they do, then there won't be an issue. If they don't, uh, I'm sure the Medical City will cover it. The, the, that, the executive checkup is comprehensive. So it's everything from, everything that you would typically do at the other facility in, in the Philippines with, uh, full cancer screening. So all cancer screenings, right? Not just one cancer screening. Okay? I don't have any other dates, uh, but I'll say, as soon as I know, it'll be the second or third week of, uh, first or second week of September. So if you're interested, uh, just keep that in mind. And then the last thing that I'd like to say under announcements is I want to make some kind of clarification regarding the Organic Act flag raising at Adaloupe last week. I want to let everybody know that there was no miscommunication about the recognition of the Mayor's Council of Guam. Uh, simply because the question was posed to me about whether or not, so Adaloupe had planned that the organizations or the agencies that were created from the Organic Act would raise a flag. The Mayor's Council, my point number one was the Mayor's Council was acknowledged, right? We were acknowledged at the very beginning. Number two, the question is, was the Mayor's Council established through the Organic Act? So was there a public law in Guam or was it Organic Act? So you answered the question and the answer is, the question is that there was a public law, right? So it, there was not anybody's fault. There's, they did not do anything wrong. And it wasn't a misrepresentation or underrepresentation. They, they did it properly and, um, understanding, just like the judiciary, right? Was not created under the Organic Act. It was only the executive branch and the legislative branch. So it wasn't just like the, the Mayor's Council. And I just, I wanted, as the president, I want to make it clear to you that they did reach out to me. And my question to them was, was the Mayor's Council created out from the Organic Act? And if it was, then do it. If not, then, right? So if something is created through public law on Guam, then it is not directly correlated to the Organic Act. Okay? Uh, any other announcements? Oh yes, the mayor of MTM is recognized. Yeah. Oh, can you get your, your? Oh, it's not working? Oh, loud then. Closer. Yeah. Oh no, turn it on, not on. Yes. Okay, loud then. Okay. Uh, sure, I, yeah, it's possible. Uh, it's possible, we just have to, Executive Director, would you mind, um, coordinating a, a group?
I could take a look into it to see if they could just have a, a scheduled date just for the mayors. I can't commit to that, that's not under our purview, so. But we could see if that could be scheduled, okay?
So that's not, it's not just the mayors, right? It's the, it's the staff that, um, um, the staff, you have to attend the ethics training within six months of your employment, unless that has changed. If that hasn't changed, then it's, we're, we're also considering the staff, right? Okay. Uh, the mayor of Chalampago is recognized.
President Jesse, I just have a, a valid concern if you don't mind. So yesterday, most of us received notices with regards to, uh, letting Homeland know of the tsunami alerts were, were going off in each of the village. I'm a little concerned that a lot of us reported that those systems were not working and that, um, you know, we all just went through a tsunami alert, right? And I think it's important that, uh, we come together as a group to kinda discuss, you know, best practices. I think there were some things that were going on throughout our mayor's chat with regards, with regards to precautionary memos that were being alerted. Um, I'm sorry, but you know, probably new mayor alert, right? But I didn't know these things were out and available. Uh, the information and both of these are really outdated and need to be updated. Um, it says here, and I don't know if Jotny Mayor knows this, but for the residents of Chalampago and Orta, most especially those in Pago Bay, they are to head to the community center in Chalampago and MU Luhon. This tsunami was coming predicted around 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Does the principal of MU Luhon know that she's going to be getting, uh, a flood of traffic there? Did I know that I was gonna be getting a flood of traffic coming to my community center? And then we also need to talk about really all clear signals, right? In the event that, you know, I had to, was it my responsibility as a mayor to go down to Pago Bay when those alerts, when those sirens are going off to ensure that all the residents evacuated? Who's to go in there? Who's doing traffic control? Who's gonna do all of that? My staff were out cutting grass that morning, you know, doing what they normally do. I had two staff members. I was doing food commodities distribution that morning or that day. So the community center wasn't available. So where would have my constituents gone, right? So there's just a lot of concerns. I don't think there was any training with regards to the tsunami alert. But what's really, really concerning right now is that a lot of us yesterday reported that our sirens did not go off. It only tells me that as an island, we are not prepared. We are definitely not prepared. So we need to, uh, talk with our partners and really, you know, find out, is the once a month alert, uh, or the once a month, uh, testing enough? And who's responsible for that? There's just a lot of questions that need to be resolved with regards to mitigation efforts, with regards to the tsunami, right? This is something that, as we all know, has happened already more than once. And I think we need to be ready. Tumuning, um, you know, I was looking at yours, I don't know, I call it the will of fortune, right? But, um, you know, those advisory alerts? A lot of people do not know when to evacuate. And until those, those, you know, those, uh, alerts went out, you know, saying, you know, stay in place, don't do anything, don't panic. But a lot of our residents did panic. I mean, I had a resident who lived in Santa Cruz who didn't need to evacuate because they're on the high ground, right? But they don't know that, you know? So clearly there still needs to be a lot of, I think, uh, adjudicational campaign with regards to, um, uh, tsunami. Um, and, you know, really getting the proper information out. I mean, I appreciate that we test the alarms on a monthly basis, but we really need to make sure, are those alarms working? And, you know, this past tsunami, were we ready? Because I, I can honestly say, based on everyone that responded yesterday in our mayor's chat, we are not ready.
Thank you, Mayor Wayne, and he did, we did have a, a brief conversation about this at the time and, uh, there are, there are certain things that we're going to do. And the one thing is to get all of the mayors and vice mayors into an emergency management training. And so admittedly, we did not do that for the freshman mayors and that was our, our fault because we did not provide that to you. Um, but because he was pointing out the, um, outdated information. Uh, once Homeland is ready with updated information and once we've identified a date and a time for that, uh, discussion with the mayors and the training with the mayors, we will inform everyone so that you'll understand. And then the, the, the misunderstanding and perhaps even miscommunication about sending out information. So during Mawar and during the pandemic, we made it a point and through this council that you would not share anything or forward anything that doesn't have an official letterhead, because that was our biggest problem back in the day. Back in, especially in pandemic, when everyone was forwarding this and, you know, everyone went haywire because, oh, now we have to, you know, stay indoors. Well, it was the same thing about evacuating. So that NWS screenshot was going around everywhere. And the NWS said that the tsunami was coming at 2:37 PM. So all hell broke loose and everyone wants to evacuate before 2:37, when in fact Homeland Security only issued an advisory. And advisory doesn't mean that there's a tsunami coming. It just means, hey, we're letting you know there's an, uh, a tsunami out there. And that's why we, it was said, once a tsunami warning, the word warning is issued, then that's when you evacuate. So our communication internally and our understanding of those advisories, that's where, what we need to provide to you so that you can relay that to your residents. Because, uh, of course, everyone, Nimitz Hill was full of people and there was no need for anyone to be up there because the, the warning was not issued. It was only an advisory. And so everybody was just kind of like mayor, the mayor said, in a panic. And you're right, we weren't prepared. So of course, the, they claimed vendor issues with the, with the sirens yesterday. So that, of course, is another, something that they need to, to resolve. But it also says then that as community leaders, we need to be prepared in case that doesn't go off in an, in a real emergency, what then do we do, right? Uh, so all of that, again, is, is a part of what we're hoping to, to have in the next month, uh, to gather everybody into one room to talk about those, those issues and those types of advisories. Uh, the mayor's name is recognized.
Thank you. Uh, you're right, Mr. President, and I think my, my biggest worry is from the time the NWS pushes it out and the time Homeland decides to put on a letter, all they do is says, you know, from the following information from the Homeland Security, from NWS, then they quote NWS verbatim. And it takes somebody to do that. And if government's been experiencing connectivity issues, that's my worry, is, are we gonna get this? I mean, I trust that a federal agency is gonna give me correct information, which is why I pushed it out. I said, you know, here you go. Then I asked Jenna, are you gonna sound the alarms? She's like, oh, we're gonna talk to management. I said, well, it's a good way to test it. Even if it's precautionary, it's a good way to just push it out, right? So then people wonder like, hey, what's going on? I'm like, hey, cause not everybody's on WhatsApp, not everybody's. So there was, trying to figure out a way, how do we connect to the people? Cause there were people still in the water. And so from the time I know, NWS sent out an alert, it took about almost 30 minutes for Homeland to produce the press release. And I'm like, wow, this is a pretty, and yes, I know it's tsunami, it's a lot longer, you know, you have hours to prep, but it, my concerns were connectivity. If there's somebody, if Jenna's not there, if somebody's not there, if another PIO's not there at their desk because they're out doing something. So I know many places took the precaution of closing down banks and everybody else moved up. We were trying to figure out, we did the same thing, Mayor Wayne. You know, where's your high ground? I said, Sinahania's high ground, but I know that we have the Agania Springs. Springs can easily, tsunami as things come in. So everyone just wanna know water height, if it's coming, so everyone was on an alert. It was a good exercise to expose what we need to do better as a community and we need to, what's, what's the backup for that? If Homeland's not available at night when an earthquake happens or when, uh, another thing happens and no one's gonna produce that product, what do we do then, absence of a, of a official letterhead?
So, yeah, and that's exactly why I'm trying to coordinate this so that we can all have our own plan, right? And then understanding that if that siren, like I said, the other, the other issue is, well, there's many issues, but one is understanding advisories. Understanding how to read and how to decipher what is being pushed out so that we can quell whatever's going on within our own community group chats and within social media. The other thing too is an alternate plan. And we all know that we have to have an alternate plan. And we were already told about using the sirens and, you know, but at the time of an emergency, are they really gonna be worried about us not using, you know, being unlawful using a siren? Uh, but that's a discussion that we, that I would like to have with everybody when, when we meet with Homeland Security, okay? Um, let's go with the mayor Mingila first and then the mayor.
Just for the record, you're talking about the vehicle sirens. I don't want the public who's watching to think it's the tsunami.
Not the, not the, the, all, um, the.
All hazards.
All hazards, that's what I'm looking for, thank you, Mayor Mingila. Uh, the mayor Mingila is recognized.
So just to touch on, on light of that, so, you know, when, when that thing did occur and all others, uh, our residents are already in tune and sometimes they weren't aware of when the testing's gonna be done, but then they made it public information, right? When they started making it public information. They were very religious about it. But then to know that anticipation was, why wasn't it sounded off that day? As Mayor Hoffman pointed out. So I think, um, like I said, that wa, that was the greater concern there, that it wasn't still exercised, whether it was an immediate threat or not. That was where the community in general were at.
And so that's where the education comes in, right? Because the reason why the, the alarm didn't go off is because it was only an advisory. And that's where I'm saying, as, as, uh, for us, we need to understand that, that verbiage as well. So once it becomes a warning, then those sirens go off because then you have two to four hours to prepare, right? And then if it's another incident, then it goes off at a, on a certain level. So the reason why it didn't go off is because it was only an advisory. It was just, knock, knock, we're just letting you know there's something out there. It wasn't, go and get prepared now. But it was, it also said, get out of the water, right? So the advisory kind of had some conflicting issue, some conflicting verbiage, right? Because, okay, get out of the water and then what? It said move inland, right? But it didn't say to evacuate. So it's like, all of those things we have to understand. So we have to be the valedictorians of, of Homeland Security. Uh, after, after the meeting we will be. Mayor Wayne, did you have, did you have, no, you're done, okay? Anyone else? Okay. Oh, Mayor Louise?
Yeah, no, it was even the businesses that were sending out messages of the warning. Um, you know, they were, uh, I saw that a lot of them were the one cat. No, they were the ones causing panic. So I would call them back and tell them it's only an advisory, it's not a warning. But their messages that were sent out, um, that went viral showed warning. So a lot of businesses closed. There's businesses that, um, opened but couldn't get any money from the bank, you know, um, to, to operate.
Do you need money if you're gonna be?
No, I mean, you know, for even, um, our nonprofit that, you know, running the bingo, you know, we were not able to get, um, any funding because the banks were closed. And so anyways, a lot of people were panicked and scared that they didn't show up to work when they were supposed to and it was all because of those messages going out saying warning. And so, um, everybody, everybody needs to be re. And so everybody, everybody needs to be reeducated on the, the different, the different levels of warning and advisory and so forth.
Understood, the mayor Chalan Pago.
Sorry, so definitely, right, we do need an educational campaign to be done throughout the villages, because again, there was that scare and there wasn't, there didn't need to be that scare, unless, you know, people kind of knew, but also as well, right? I think a lot of us were watching the news, right? And a lot of the other individuals that were covering it, you know, were getting alerts on their phones and everything. So I think that's something that needs to be also visited with regards to when the telecommunications companies send out alerts so that, you know, individuals don't panic, right? And we stay, for Mayor Louise, I don't know if you know, but on this booklet, your residents are told to go to ITC. And I don't know if there's any parking at ITC or, or anywhere up there, so good luck. I think we need to revisit this thing.
Yeah, so I'm working on it and we'll, we'll get to everybody. So again, I, we're working on it and, and hopefully we can, we meet within the next month.
And, and I think Mayor Louise brought a good point, is that the federal has their standard and then the government Guam has theirs. Usually the bases, always, right? Whenever there's a storm, the bases are already on some condition, we're waiting for the Gov Guam to act. And I think that's where, that's what creates the confusion, because a lot of our families work in military bases and on military assets. And then it's told like, military's hunkering down, why aren't you guys? We're like, whoa, no one's telling us.
And that's the, that's the, the thing is when, those things are isolated. But when it comes to like the typhoon, like Mawar, Mawar, there's joint, there's a joint release, right? It's from JRM and Adaloupe. So we, it's, everything should perhaps be that way, because you can't have two different, right? Unless you live on base, you stay on base and whatever, but I don't wanna get involved in, or into that at the moment. But we're, we're going to meet regarding that, okay? Any, any other announcements or anything regarding that? No? Oh, the mayor Mingila's recognized.
I just wanna thank Mayor BJ and the committee for the liberation, thank you, was different. And Queens Committee, thank you.
Mayor.
And you, the committee.
Thank you.
It was a very nice evening.
Thank you, Mayor, that leads into my other, my next announcement. I, I want to, we didn't have a liberation put, put on here, because the closeouts are gonna be reported in September. But because we don't wanna wait too much longer, I do wanna thank everyone for, for pitching in. Liberation was, it was, for whatever reason, everybody did their, their best. I want to recognize our executive director and the staff for coordinating our, our festival at the Chamora Village. I know we.
Thank you.
For whatever it is, there's, there's always going to be an issue, but regardless, it was executed and it was done. And I'm very appreciative of it. The staff worked very hard, I think at the last, I mean, they were working overnight, I think. So I do appreciate the staff's help for liberation and also for the Organic Act event that was being, that was planned. In, we've learned, we learned, we continue to learn things as we go along. One of the things I'm gonna say is that liberation is by law under the mayor's council of Guam. And if it remains under the mayor's council of Guam, then it behooves the council as a whole to be active in its planning. And if, in fact, the council is no longer wishing to, to be active in the planning and the execution of liberation, then I think as a body, we need to come together to have a plan to either, have a plan to fix that, right? And one, it's legislation, because it is in the law that we are the coordinators of it. I do wanna recognize that there are, there were other organizations involved in the, in the 81st liberation. The governor's office, the governor did offer, no, she accepted to handle the parade for us. And so that was, you know, that's always a big feat, and so I do appreciate that they were there for us. And then our staff did the, did the procurement side of that parade. So again, we thank them as well. And then I think if there was nothing else, I mean, is there any, were there any concerns or any issues regarding liberation that anyone wants to bring up? Okay. Moving on, no, the what? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on. Any other announcements? Okay, if there aren't any other announcements, it's 11:56 in the morning and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. You beat me by two minutes.